Well, now, yes, Mayor.
I call the November the 21st, 2011 work session of the plane reported committee's order. Would the, please call the roll.
Mr. Waller, Mr. Haddon, Mr. Turner, Mr. May, Mayor Graham.
Here, President, with that forty-five. Welcome to H. M. U. to here today. The first item we have on the agenda are citizens' comments. And just, as everyone knows this, but this is a reminder that citizen comments, if you'd like to execute, please hold me a five independent, if you would, please. And so when you come up to speak, we'd like for you to do a work session, just come up and have a seat in front here. And then let us know what you have on your mind. Fill your name when you come up in that back. So, citizen comments, we have citizen comments.
I'm just gonna make a very simple request. I've read the paper.
You only have this one mic?
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jill Robinson and I live down on, I'm a citizen of the city. I live down on Steel Street. And I'm just gonna make one simple request. I've read the paper. It doesn't look like this pay-as-you-go initiative is gonna go. But, but I would like to request that at the women's shelter, we have one of those rollout recycling bins. It's not a bin, it's a cart, I guess. And I love it. And, but it's a little too big. It's the big one. I, no, I guess it's the medium-sized one in the scheme of things. Would you all consider acquiring the smaller ones? And, and you could sell them, I'm glad the paper won. If you wanna make a little money out of it, I don't mind, you know, things are tough here. I don't mind putting a few bucks away. But I'd love to have one and I thought that my mother would like to have one. And as a Christmas present, I might buy one for all my tenants. Because I think it's a really valuable tool and I think it'll encourage them to recycle. And I'd like for you all to consider it, you know, you can have a, not a large inventory, I guess, or if you'd rather just order them as people order them, I don't know. But I would like for you to give that some serious consideration because I don't think anything else is flying here. And I feel like that is progress, a step in the right direction. We have rolled those things out, right? We've done some walking in some neighborhoods in the county and it's done a little pilot. We've done the rollouts, but we've actually done the bigger rollout. And in both of the two members that we've done, recycling has gone up. One up, it went up to what?
Both neighborhoods started at under twenty-five percent participation and both neighborhoods are well over fifty percent participation considering you lose the ninety-six gallon recycling.
Yeah, and that's the big one. So, I would like for you to consider purchasing the small ones and, you know, and if you wanna walk some neighborhoods and encourage this, I'll want you, I'll join the government, I mean, on the commission that would like to do that. I think, I would like to see this move forward in some, somewhat. And I'm offering my services to that.
Mr. Hackworth, is it possible for us to get like those thirty-five gallon rollouts for people who would want them to recycle?
If they, well, we've never, yes, the answer is yes, obviously. We wanna go down in that direction. So you're saying people would call in and request a recycling container, a small, medium, large container, and we would deliver those?
Well, I don't read the end.
Well, Master Robinson requested that, you know, that she had the option to purchase the small one because it's easier to handle. Anything that we've learned from this experience and this year-long debate on trash is that perhaps people would like smaller containers that are a little more manageable. If, I think, I think Master Robinson's correct in that it would help the recycling rate, or recycling, the recycling rate that we have, be able to offer a larger container where they could fit more recyclers in, but not something too large that's unmanageable like a ninety-five gallon or something like that.
The city currently gives out eighteen gallon red recycling container. And we offered for purchase the larger ninety-six gallon container. So assuming this is the one they purchased from the city.
Yeah, I think so. I don't know if we purchased it or if you guys, I guess we purchased it.
Right, that's our program where we give them out for free.
No, 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 I wanna purchase, I wanted to purchase one. I want a smaller one, like the one, the model that you had on display, Kroger's and...
The model that would have been the free option under pay.
Right, right. Are they on the market? Can you buy a certain number of them and then sell them? I guess is the question.
Yeah, the carts are, I mean, they're, they're definitely the way to go, I believe. Lot of benefit for the residents and for our crews in serving carts. Kind of, if you all want us to offer carts for sale, we definitely can do that.
For what it's worth, this is a little background. There had, I mean, there has been some discussion of providing the carts even under the flat fee, but just according to the numbers that the staff gave us, that would, I mean, not only would that fee be twice as high as the pay-per-fee, but just providing the carts and going automation alone would actually increase our, our ongoing operating expenses.
Well, I love the...
But we had to ask on the cost of that.
And, and I'm not really sure, I'm barred, I'm barred by, I've had conversations with people this meeting too, that there is some concern about, oh, it's all, it's all wheels, oh, it's gonna fall over me, I, whatever, you know? And, and it's a comfort level thing. And, and I think if we can get started with just say, and give it a try, you know, even if you only buy twenty-five of them and say, hey, they're for sale, you know, and see if they sell, and then you buy twenty-nine more, or if people will call in or, then, you know, whatever works best, obviously economically here, you know? But I, I think it's a, it's a step in the right direction. Instead of just, you know, not going anywhere with anything. Okay. Now, I'll do that.
I don't know how this all goes play out person, but this is something we take into consideration, whatever comes from it. Okay, any other citizen comment? Come forth.
I'm Ms. Ann Gibbs and I think it's a mistake to consider this pay-as-you throw ordinance a money-making or a money-losing proposition. The only way you're, I think, going to increase recycling is fine or tax those that don't recycle. You all, I'm sure, have considered that and for some reason found it not workable. I like what you're doing and I'm a, I'm a firm recycler, a very firm recycler. My garbage, trash, once a week fits in a Kroger brochure bag. That's how much I generate, literally nothing. And I think this whole subject would have been more acceptable, less controversial if it had been presented not as a revenue source. You're not gonna make money off this, just face it. And I don't care how much you push, pay-as-you throw, if you don't find those that don't recycle, they're not gonna recycle. I'll take all the free garbage cans the city wants to give me. I'll take all the free recycling cans the city wants to give me because I will use them. I'll use them both. But please don't make the mistake of thinking this thing's gonna break even because it's not, that it's gonna make you money because it's not. This is just another expense somehow or another the city's gonna have to sort. I thought you made a major financial mistake in not taking four percent property tax. Since everybody's filing for reelection this year, I don't know if, I'm not saying they had something to do with it, but you're not filing for reelection next year. So I would highly consider that. You cannot count on your occupational tax rate. We say it's one point seven five, but for every new job that comes in here, it's half that because half, the other half goes to the county. So you're not gonna climb out of that hole. It was dug when you annexed that property out on these things to camp. Just by the bullet, it's easy for me to say. But don't consider this from a financial viewpoint. Everybody is thinking that you're trying to pull wool over their ass. I wish I was wrong, but...
A couple of things. First of all, the commission did take a four percent property tax on the...
Oh, my God, good. Thank you for bringing, thank you.
There was a four, there was a four on the...
I just don't think you take four.
But in terms of, I mean, in terms of the, you know, whether or not pay throw raises, raises money, I mean, it's, I think one of the cases has been made, nobody, nobody's ever tried to claim, except for some opponents of the thing, that pay throw, that the intention is to raise more revenue. In fact, the numbers we got from city staff proved pretty conclusively that it would reduce or limit ninety-seven percent of the annual bills in town. I mean, we definitely, you know it can bring in less revenue. And that's part of the point, is to reduce people's bills. But we also, I mean, the estimates we've gotten from staff, and these are verified by, you know, local data and thousands of other communities who have already done this and, you know, recycling rates and analysis of various expenses of our system, et cetera. I mean, even, even the estimates we've got from staff show that pay throw would actually reduce our annual operating expenses over time. And just to give you, just to give you an example of that, I mean, it's pretty easy to demonstrate, but right now we have a twelve percent recycling rate and it brings in roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year. And that varies with the market, that's roughly. The average, the national average recycling rate is about thirty-four percent. Pay throw communities across the board have higher recycling rates than the national average. Our twelve percent's very low. And so staff have estimated a very conservative on the low end, a conservative fifteen percent increase in our recycling rate with pay throw, which is still total less than the national average rate. So it's safe to say that we would at least make a little less than average if we went with pay throw. But doing that alone would increase our recycling revenue from one hundred to about two hundred and thirty thousand a year. Of course, if we see a thirty percent increase in, in recycling rate, which is much more common in life than with pay throw, then we see our recycling revenue, when we got, but then we see recycling revenue much closer to... Thirty percent, then we see recycling revenue much closer to, I don't know, three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars a year. And at that point, we're in the black on recycling, as I said, we've, you know, we've hit our, but the, I mean, the point is that it's not about raising more. It's not, it's about charging the public less and about reducing our operating expenses.
I know that. You know that.
Sure.
But quite often John Key Public thinks this is a backdoor way to fill this six hundred thousand dollar hole that was in the budget, or to make it more palatable to try to fill that hole. That's kind of where I'm coming from. They're not gonna buy it. They're just not gonna buy it. And I know you all need money, I'm not saying you don't. If you have to raise taxes, raise taxes.
Thank you.
And you can quote me.
Any other citizen comments? We thank you very much. We're going now to city manager, give your report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have all our department heads here and call them in one by one if they have a report. Chief Posits, you have anything to report today? Mr. Dawson, finance? Chief Will Hoy?
Yes, sir.
Randy? Anything?
No, sir.
Bill?
No, sir.
The record? From Beckman? Jerry Mueller?
No, sir.
Hubert?
Yes, we have a stormwater advisory committee meeting coming up at the Paulsor Library and that's gonna be held at?
The eight, at four o'clock.
The eight?
December eight.
Four o'clock. We're gonna be talking issues regarding our stormwater permit. We're required to have so many meetings, we have one before the end of this year. So we'll be publishing in the paper. But this is not the same meeting for Stormwater Advisory Group as associated with the utility. This is more of a permit.
If I may, could you give us a report on the roof project that we've got going on right now?
The roofing company started approximately a week and a half ago and they took off the first layer, the first, they're doing the roof project over the fire department where all the bad leaks were. They took off the first leg, first two layers of the roof and like put one layer membrane down right before the rain we had last week, end of the week last week. They're continuing to work on it, but we've been hitting showers and so they should be finished up. We get some, get some good, good weather hopefully the end of this week. Still not finished yet, hopefully end of this week.
Did we find better results after the rain? Did we have leaks or?
I've not heard from the fire department. Heard they were better, but not, there's still some leaks. Is that correct?
Still substantial leaks as of, as of Friday, that's right.
So not even better?
Minimally better.
Minimally better. Gotta look for the small victories. We're also gonna follow up with another contract to do the city hall, planning portion of city hall, go ahead and bid at December or January to do another project for this side of the roof come this spring. We would like permission to add Myrtle Avenue. We bid out a culvert replacement project and we opened bids last Monday. We would like that to be, to the agenda come next Monday.
Mr. Mueller, planning, can he? Charlie, nine P?
No.
Daryl, nine one one?
I'm okay, thank you.
Did you have a bill, did you have a gus? Something happened to you last week?
It came to rent on the Friday morning, so mother and baby are doing well. They're still, they were talking about maybe letting go today, but I don't know, maybe a day or two, but anyway, very happy about that. For some reason, my wife wants to stay out of the hospital all the time instead of home with me now. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other department head reports?
Next on the agenda is old business. You have some old business. Oh, you do?
Well, it depends on whether or not we wanna consider it older new business.
We put it, we put it up, old business, new business, so you take, you pick.
These are kind of just some, some individual concerns. Somebody, somebody asked me on the street and I don't, and I just didn't know the answer to their question, if leaf collection was gonna continue as long as leaves were still hitting the ground. So I think that, according to some information they got, that the window for leaf collection was over. I, I...
There's a scheduled publication of the newspaper and on the website, but it usually runs in December. It's not, it does not end now, so I can't recall when.
That's good enough for me.
We're not ending it.
I didn't ask that long.
We've got a couple more weeks if we see a question.
That's a piece of new business. This is old business to the extent that it came up, came up last term, but regarding the archery area at Coast Springs Park, a former commissioner, Lynn Bowers, got hold of me, expressing two concerns. One is that when that land was initially purchased, and this is just what she, what she told me, she said that when that land was initially purchased, it was with a grant for preservation. And that the terms of the money we accepted to purchase that property shouldn't have permitted it to be developed for, well, developed, you know, for recreational use or to an archery course or a sporting range.
I'll have to do a little research on, I have to do a little research on that. However, I believe that piece of Coast Spring was purchased just with city money.
Separately from that?
Yeah, now, the original Coast Spring was purchased with Land Heritage Conservation Funds that in the wetlands, and there is a conservation easement on those pieces of property. Up top was purchased when the state was looking at building at Capital View and we were requested to find property to move like the soccer and football fields somewhere else. And the state would pay for moving the fields, but we had to come up with a piece of property and Mr. Thompson was the city manager then. And so I'm almost positive that there's no conservation easement on that and it was purchased with city money. I will have to go back, it's been quite a while ago, but...
Would you mind doing that? Because what you're describing is what I've always understood to be the case.
Right.
But in light of a commission that you're anticipating, is it a great concern?
Yes, I'll, I'll report back. But I'm almost about ninety-five percent sure the bottom hundred acres are, there's a conservation easement on all of those purchased with, I think it was Heritage Land Conservation Funds.
So not with the?
Not with the, not with the hundred up top. But I will let you, give you a fair answer on that.
I appreciate that. Thanks, man. Oh, I have one more question about that space too. And this is, this is, this is the context this space came up in last year, when you all were, you know, asking permission to develop the archery range in the first place. You know, I expressed concerns about Coast Springs being preserved, being a nature preserve and within having the recreational trails that parched out the park. I expressed concerns about those, about this, you know, about developing a portion of, of preservation area into a recreational area and was assured that the plateau was completely separate from the rest of the park, segregated, the trails don't mix or mingle, or whatnot. And so again, I hadn't seen this for myself. But another concern that Ms. Bowers expressed was that the trails from Coast Springs actually are reaching out in line through the archery course.
They did at first, but when we took you all on your tour and we, of course, we just had it set up there out in the field because the range, the ranges we set aside, and this was, this was a recommendation from Andrew and a lot of the nature hikers and things like that, we took that into consideration. We set aside like seven acres right as soon as you come up for the archery range. Now, there is a trail behind the regular range, which is a three D course where you shoot, but we have since then separated. The archery is here, there's like five, about seven acres. The other one hundred and twenty-seven acres is still a passive recreation.
And without pass?
We have not officially opened that part of the park to the public. We'll be doing that this spring with reforestation acre, but there will be adequate signage and everything where the, the nature trails stop, archery begins. So, so it is a separate entity. And we felt like that's, that's the only sport that will be, you know, considered up there, because archery is kind of a, it's a passive sport that fits in there and so, but we, we are making a very concentrated effort to separate the two entities on that, on that end. But you can get from the bottom to the, to the other one hundred and twenty-seven acres from Coast Spring. It is all tied together. But, so, and if, if you wanna see it sometime, there's safety involved where the regular range is. We have a twelve-foot berm up with a fence where arrows cannot go back behind where the three D is and all that.
Thanks, man.
Okay.
Got a couple pieces of new business there.
Okay, before, before old business, before I need new business.
Somebody contacted me today, this is very familiar, contacted me today with some concerns about sewer billing. They had been on Septic and have recently hooked up to the sewer lines and are now, you know, are now on the sewer billing system.
And their concern is what?
They said that they started getting billed when they got permitted to add on to the sewer system. So they started getting billed maybe a month and a half before they actually started receiving the service. And of course, we have the minimum, we have the minimum two thousand gallon requirement. So I guess they're, they were billed for a month and a half in which they didn't receive service and they contacted your office about it and you all took care of it.
Yes.
Well, you took care of it to the extent that you did build them for the full month and no service they received.
Correct.
The month where they received service for half the month, you did build them the two hundred thousand, I mean, the, the two thousand minimum we had.
Right.
Is fair enough. I think that the concern they had though is that if it's, because they almost didn't catch it, they almost didn't catch that they were being billed for a month of service they weren't receiving, they did do something, it was pretty picky about their bills. And so his concern is that if it's standard operating procedure in the city, you start billing folks when the permit comes through well in advance of them receiving the service, but lots of other folks are getting billed for, have been billed for a service they haven't received and, and may not have caught it. But is that standard operating practice and can we do anything about it?
Back approximately four years ago, we did a internal audit on our building and we found three hundred and seventy-some odd customers who were not being billed.
Who were receiving service.
Who were receiving the service. Some of that, I won't say all of it, but probably a significant portion of that, let me put it back up, what, the way we used to handle it is that you would come get your permit, the permit requires us to inspect it, and when we inspect it, we add it to sewer bill. But again, you know, if the sewer bill comes out on the fifteenth and you connect on the thirteenth, plant board's gonna send you a bill for the entire month. If you connect on the sixteenth and your bill comes out on the fifteenth, then you're gonna get almost a full month of service, just like, but that's, that's the way the plant board operates. Nothing we can do about that. But what we found is over the years, for whatever reason, don't, don't know the exact history behind it, but there were people that either did not, the plumbers did not call to get an inspection, therefore we were thinking it was added. We notified the plant board and somehow or another it got lost in the process, who knows? So to prevent that from happening, we started to institute, and I said this was probably four years, five years ago, I'm not even sure when that happened, it's been about four years, I think, I think in September of oh seven, anyway. But to prevent that from happening and to prevent it from getting out of hand again is when we started instituting the, basically notifying the plant board, which allows us to make sure it gets on the plant board billing. And yes, if somebody calls, we will give them, you know, that, that first month. And in a few cases, we even had to go a second month because they couldn't get a plumber and whatever. But it was primary to keep us from getting back in the hole like we did several years ago of having a lot of customers and a lot of outstanding money that were not being billed. If you all prefer us to do it a different way, happy to do it, just recognizing there's a pitfall if we do that again.
Right. Although if we're, if we're aware of when people start the permitting process, if we're also aware of when people, do, do we know when people start receiving the service? Or is that something that, that, that everybody has to provide, is that information?
That would be something that the plant board would have to provide as well.
Mr. Moore?
One thing, Commissioner Brother, when Bill and I discussed this issue several years and...
One thing, Commissioner Brannister, when Bill and I discussed this issue several years ago, one of the problems, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, was that someone would get, they would apply to hook on to the sewer system. And I think the connection would actually be made, but then we were waiting for the plumber to give us the notification that all the plumbing work has been done and that customers now able to receive service. And what was happening in a number of cases was that we never got that call from the plumber. And so, you know, they would be, in certain instances, receiving water for up to 12 months before we finally figured out, well, the plumber just forgot to call us. And so I think that's the...
And that's part of it, yes.
That's why the policy was made. Once the permit is issued, that's when you add them to the bill. Because they're the ones that control when the, the customer's the one that controls when the plumber comes out and not us. So if the permit's issued, you know, it's, the decision was made, I think by sewer, that they control when the plumber comes up and comes out, gets everything where it was so they can start receiving water. So they're the ones that control that. Once the permit's issued, the decision was made to include it on the bill.
And what we, what we could do is we could develop a handout, and every time somebody picks up a permit, it essentially says, you know, this is our policy. If you get your first bill and you're still not on sewer, contact us and we'll give you a credit. We could develop something like that. And then we could give it to them and say, you know, this is, this is the policy. But again, it's a proactive thing. We chose to err on the side of, if somebody asks, we'll definitely give them their money back. But it's a lot harder to go back after the fact and collect the money from the customer.
Sure. I mean, I get that. I mean, it's, you know, essentially what I'm hearing is it's easier, it's easier to bill people for a service they haven't received than it is to make sure they're only going to be billed for services they are receiving.
To a certain degree, yes.
Is it, would it be, I mean, would it be fair or reasonable to, to do exactly what you're describing? Would the billing starts automatically in relation to the start of the permitting process? Would the billing starts exactly one month after the permit's first issued? And then, and then as a general rule, the first sewer bill that people will pay will be a month that they've actually received service, if not full service?
That would be something we have to coordinate with the plant board. We have no control over the billing. It's something we have to talk to the plant board about.